Okay. Okay, sir, it is six thirty.
I call this meeting to order for August eleventh twenty twenty. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Richard Buss.
Yeah.
Mayor Potem Nadia Sykes.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Roden.
Here.
Commissioner Susan Payne.
Here.
Commissioner Dusty Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Jason Baldwin. City Manager Brian Caesar.
Here.
City Attorney Patricia Bengoche.
Here.
The clerk is present. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. If everyone would please stand, we'll have the invocation that will be given by our very own clerk, Rachel Hughes, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Commissioner McDonald if everyone will stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to in prayer thanking you for another day of life, dear God, thanking you for just everything that you bestow upon us, dear God, and ask for wisdom, dear Lord, on our commission today. We thank you for the time that they give to this community, dear Lord. Just thank you for their guidance and we just ask you bless them, dear God, just in the direction that they're to take, dear Lord, and we ask for the citizens of Alamo Gordo, dear God, to just have understanding and patience on our city leaders, dear God, because they so graciously do give of their time and we thank you again for each and every one of them and we ask just for the decisions that they're to make, dear Lord, that they are what's going to be best for our city, dear God, and we ask these things in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Invisible.
Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner McDonald and Rachel. Thank you very much. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
Motion from Commissioner Baldwin to approve the agenda. Do I hear a second?
A second.
You have a second from Commissioner Wright? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 May. Seven zero, correct? Yeah. We'll move right into presentations. We have a presentation on Project Search and Evidence-Based Transition to Work Program for Individuals with Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities. We have Alex Rios, education specialist here tonight, that's going to give us a presentation on that. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having us today. I'm going to share my screen right now. Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Alex Rios. I work for the UNM Center for Development and Disability Partners for Employment, and with me here today I have Stephen Starkovich, the Director of Special Education for Alamo Gordo Public Schools, and Peggy O'Neil, Chief Executive Officer for Zia Therapy Center. We are excited to present Project Search to you in the ambition of the city of Alamo Gordo becoming our host business. First of all, I'd like to introduce Partners for Employment. We are the statewide coordinators for Project Search here in New Mexico. We are funded by the New Mexico Department of Health and Developmental Disability Supports Division and the New Mexico Division of Vocational Rehab. Why does employment matter for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities? Well, in two thousand thirteen, seventy percent of working age adults were employed in the U.S., but by comparison, less than thirty percent of working age adults with disabilities participated in the workforce. We have a lot of work to do in our country, and the best way to do it is to empower people with the skills and experience they need to get competitive employment. So, these are our core partners for the state for Project Search. And Project Search in Alamo Gordo is spearheaded by this collaborative team of partners. We have UNM, we have DVR, Department of Vocational Rehab, the New Mexico Department of Health, we have Project Search National, Zia Therapy Center, Alamo Gordo Public Schools, Otero County Advocates for Developmental Disabilities, the New Mexico Commission for the Blind, and the New Mexico School for the Blind and Visually Impaired. And this team has been working together for the last year to help bring this program to life, and our missing piece to our puzzle right here is our host business, which is why we're here today. Brief history about Project Search. Erin Riley, a nurse at the Cincinnati Children's Hospital, was working in the emergency department, and she noticed that there is a very high turnover in positions, entry-level positions such as equipment sterilization, inventory management, exam room prep, and she realized that people with intellectual and developmental disabilities are fully capable of doing these jobs, yet they weren't in these jobs, and so she wanted to create a program that provided them with these opportunities. And that was the fruition of the Project Search program in nineteen ninety-six. And now in New Mexico, we have seven sites, with Alamo Gordo becoming number eight. Right now, we have programs at the University of New Mexico Hospital in Albuquerque, we have Embassy Suites Hotel in Albuquerque, Presbyterian Russ Medical Center in Rio Rancho, the Hilton Garden Inn Hotel in Gallup, the Good Samaritan Society in Las Cruces, Buffalo Thunder Hotel and Casino in Puebla, and the City of Farmington Municipal Services. As you can see here, in twenty-four years, Project Search has proliferated all over the world with over five hundred sites, and it is recognized as one of the best practice models for school-to-work transition. This model is a holistically supportive program to the interns. It helps them to get long-term job coaching, support from their teachers, from the skills trainers, from their coworkers, to help them get the skills and experience they need to pursue their career dreams. And these are pictures of interns in Project Search programs here in New Mexico who've successfully graduated. So how does Project Search work? Well, here in Alamo Gordo, the students will be eighteen to twenty-one years old and be graduating from Alamo Gordo Public Schools. We are looking to recruit eight to twelve students, and they will circulate among the host business in three different rotations in three different departments. And these rotations are developed collaboratively between the onsite Project Search team, which is comprised of a teacher from the school district, an educational assistant from the school district, and a job developer from Zia Therapy, and they'll work with the host business to develop these rotations. Some of rotation examples that the city of Farmington has used are human resources, doing administrative work. We have the senior center with them helping to put on events and preparing meals, the landscaping and ground maintenance department, as well as the airport. Here's a snapshot of what it looks like for an annual Project Search calendar year. It coincides with the school year. They start the program in August, in the fall, and they will do a ten-week rotation and a week in between each rotation to help prepare an interview for their next rotation. And then by the third rotation in the spring, Zia Therapy will be working with the intern to help them seek jobs out in the community or at the host business, should there be one available. And by graduation, hopefully that intern will have secured a job or be in the process of looking for one. This is a day in the life of a project's intern schedule. It does vary depending on the workplace culture and peak hours of productivity for the host business. The key points to take away from a day in the life of a Project Search intern is that they are in the classroom for an hour working on employability skills and life skills, and then the rest of the time is spent working with their coworkers in their department for their rotation. And the onsite team is helping their coworkers and the intern to ensure that the intern is integrated in the business and performing their job duties effectively. So, the main goal for Project Search is integrated competitive employment at or above minimum wage of sixteen-plus hours a week of work, unless the intern specifies a different career goal. We want them to help grow their work skills and their life skills to eventually be more independent, promote systems change where inclusive employment is the norm, facilitate inter-agency collaboration on the state and local level, and connect the intern to a follow-along support, which in our case is Zia Therapy. And Zia Therapy is with the intern from day one and way past graduation. They're helping them to learn the skills, but also look for a job and then maintain their job after they get it. The core roles and responsibilities for a host business will be to work collaboratively with the onsite team to develop the rotations, provide feedback from the supervisors and managers on what the interns can work on and what they're doing well at, provide a classroom space onsite, and participate on the steering committee to provide guidance on developing the program. We have many successes around the state, and I wanted to highlight two for you all today. This is an article from the Daily Times, the city of Farmington, talking about the positive impact that Project Search had had on the broader community. And another one is the University of New Mexico Hospital. They are the longest-standing Project Search program in our state, and many, many graduates from their program have actually secured employment at the hospital, doing a wide range of really awesome jobs, such as sterile processing, working in the dietary department, and also working in a place called the Bat Cave, which is where they store a lot of the props and dummies and whatnot for training, and it's actually in a really cool area in the hospital. So, you all can access these articles in the presentation. There's some additional resources on the business benefits of hiring a person with a disability, as well as the link to the National Project Search website. They are an extremely supportive umbrella organization to the team. They provide a lot of curriculum for the interns. They provide insight from other programs around the country, and they're very much about being accessible. They will be coming down either via Zoom or in person to help train this team on how to effectively implement Project Search in Alamo Gordo. So, that concludes our presentation for today. Thank you all for letting us come and appeal to you as a potential host business. This program is extremely important to our young adults with disabilities and helping them to become independent in their lives and pursue their dreams. And we are here to answer any questions you all may have. And these are pictures, too, of the interns from across the state who have graduated.
Any questions, Ms. Rios? Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you for what you're doing in our community. Is anyone questions?
I have a brief question.
I can't see, but I think that Mayor Potem Sykes.
Yeah. Should we choose to do this? Do you help us select the departments or the people within the city that could potentially work with your interns? Is that what you do?
That is something we can help with. This program is business-led, so we really like to get the buy-in and the feedback from the business first about who they think would be best to work on.
I see. Okay.
As a natural support, and also in developing the departments. The interns are, they do have to meet certain eligibility requirements and do a skill assessment before they enter into the program, and then they also work with the team to develop their goals for their career and their skills. So, once those have been identified, the host business and the onsite team can work together to identify a department that will both benefit the intern and the host business based on what the intern's skills are and what they are capable of learning.
Thank you.
What else? Again, Ms. Rios, thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you. Thank you so much for what you're doing to help the persons with disabilities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to public comment. Rachel, do we have anyone who has requested any comment?
No, sir. We didn't have any public comment.
Okay. We will move on to the city manager report that will be given by our city manager, Brian Caesar. Brian?
Okay, tonight, I only have two items, and you'll realize why when I get to the second item. First, we were contacted today by Union Pacific. It's been almost a month now since we sent off the signed agreement and the check to Union Pacific for eighteen thousand dollars, but we hadn't received our signed, or where they have signed it, sent it back to us. Word we got today is they will make every effort to have it signed and back to us within the next couple of weeks. At Union Pacific, due to COVID, they're only working in the office one day a week. So, it's been, I guess, a little bit difficult for them to communicate and get the document to the right person to sign. But we did, like I said, hopefully within the next couple of weeks we'll have that, and then we can finally get this project out to bid and complete it. The second item, well, I said, let's see why I only had two. After tonight's meeting, I'll be out through the rest of this week. I'll be back on Monday. I'm actually in town. I will occasionally check my phone. Everyone knows how to find me and get ahold of me. Stephanie obviously will be in charge while I'm out. And I'm already sitting in my camper now. Probably won't take it anywhere, but I'll camp in my driveway. And that's all I have.
Questions of our city manager? You have a great short vacation, Brian. And thank you.
I got a quick question.
Oh, we do have one. Commissioner Wright?
Brian, what's the word on the Bonita Lake stuff? Is there any kind of total officer setback on that yet?
Um, we're going to get a small rain delay request from the contractor, but luckily, even though it was a very significant rain up there, the contractor had already previously cleared the silt line. That's the line that's at the bottom of the dam. So, any of the water that actually came into the lake, they were able to discharge through that silt line. So, it's not like previous events where that line was plugged and they had weeks or months of pumping to do. So, right now, still, they're still on schedule to to complete early spring, summerish of the next calendar year.
Thanks.
And what else? Thank you, Brian. We'll move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Does anyone have anything they'd like to comment about? I would like to, I did a little survey. I'd like, I think this is maybe the place to talk about that. I spoke with some restaurant owners and also some motel owners in our community, just to kind of get their feelings to where they're at, and I've got some comments here that I'm going to go over very briefly, but, and pretty much all of them had the same thing to say, and the reason I did the motels and the restaurants is because I think they're some of the ones taking the most severest hits. Anyway, one of the things that I heard was that the PPP, the Payroll Protection Program funds are gone. They didn't last long. There's been a big delay, though that helped a lot. It was a little bit convoluted at times and not sure just exactly how much that did help. It's hard, and this is from both of these industries. It's hard to get employees back when an unemployment program pays them more than their original wage. They're having some difficulties because of that. Hopefully, that's going to be fixed in some executive orders, maybe. Some of the laid-off employees have found new jobs, so when they're offered their employment back, they're already working for somebody else, which makes it difficult for the restaurant owner or the hotel. Most restaurants in Alamo Gordo do not have outside space. They're serving customers at a fifty percent occupancy. Anything less than fifty percent would be operating at probably at a loss for most of them. And so, that's not really an option for them. So, the restaurants would pretty much just shut down unless they can do it out and have drive up the window. One restaurant, it's been open for almost thirty years that I spoke with the owner of that. They've earned the lowest rate or unemployment, their lowest unemployment rate, because they've always paid their people good, and they've had a very, very low turnover. They're very concerned what happens now when they open back up, because they now have had to terminate people. But up until, you know, for the last thirty years, they haven't had to. That's kind of a difficult one, too, for someone that's done that for so long. One motel owner said that at this time of year, they have usually sixty to seventy-five percent occupancy, and they're running an occupancy between twenty and twenty-five percent, which is unheard of what the normal would be for this time of year. Not showing a profit. They're actually operating at a loss. This is not even a break even, and that's basically, I just, I kind of wanted to hear it from the mouth of some of the proprietors and the businessmen in our community, and what I've been hearing is that they're having some really, really tough times out there. A lot of these businesses are not going to start back up, and we need to get things kicked up here in this, in our state and this community really, really soon. Anyway, any other, anybody else have any comments?
I have some.
Commissioner Payne?
I have a couple of things. Let me start with this. Just a little plug. Beginning September, hold on just a second. Of course, it's not working. September second through the thirtieth, and then September third through October first, I am going to be teaching on September second through the thirtieth. I'll be teaching a Local Government for Kids class up at the college. It's a community class. It should be a lot of fun. It's for kids ages twelve to seventeen. And then September third through October first, I'm going to be teaching Local Government Basics, which is for adults eighteen and over, and that's also going to be up at the college. It will be in person, so I'm excited about that. I'd much rather do it in person. It's going to be just basic government, a lot of fun, a lot of interaction, some guest speakers, wink, wink, Richard, wink, wink, Brian. And so, I think it's going to be a lot of fun, and Owen, Patricia, I can't see you right now, but I know you're there, so wink, wink to you, too. So, anyway, I think it'll be a lot of fun, so if you could kind of spread the word on that. I don't think it'll be a nice break, especially for kids, because they're not meeting face-to-face right now. This will be face-to-face, so of course we'll practice all the social distancing and the mask and all that stuff. But anyway, so I want to put that plug in. Also, I just wanted to kind of go back to our last meeting. Commissioner Reardon made a statement about Sheriff Black and an incident in Cloudcroft, and it really concerned me because of our conversation, so I actually called Sheriff Black. I did invite him to this meeting. Unfortunately, he is at a, gosh, I don't know, sheriff's convention or something. I don't know. I've been rid of so. I also spoke to our undersheriff, and neither one of them could take me up on my offer or didn't take me up, but I did invite them to the meeting. I just wanted to clarify that there was an incident in Cloudcroft. There wasn't really an incident in Cloudcroft. That's not true. There was, the state police were up there. They were speaking to businesses, but what actually happened is it got back to Sheriff Black, and he went through the chain of command at the state police, and they just kind of had a conversation. There were no threats, no intimidation. None of that actually happened. And so, I didn't think that it did, because I just, I really questioned that, and he said, absolutely, it did not happen. He said, you know, and the way he explained it to me, and he's right about this, is they're all in uncharted territory right now. This is unprecedented. It's never happened before, and when it's never, when something like this has never happened before, how do you handle it? And nobody really knows, because this has never happened before. And so, this is sort of a learning thing for all of them. I wanted to talk to him about, I hear a lot about the sheriff is the law of the land, and so I wanted to have that conversation with him, because it's not the way I understand it, and he verified what I thought, which is he's not really the law of the land. He cannot override the state police. They have, oh, what do you call that? Sort of parallel jurisdiction, I guess. I'm not really sure what the term is, but he, you know, he verified with me that he could not override what the state police were doing, as long as it was constitutional, and unfortunately, it is constitutional according to our state constitution and as upheld, of course, by the state Supreme Court recently. So, they cannot override that. He doesn't have the authority to do that. So, unfortunately, while, you know, we don't like, of course, what's going on, or some of us don't possibly like what's going on, there's really not a lot we can do about it, and I wish he had been here himself. But I did memorialize our conversation in an email to him, just to kind of go over what we talked about. We did have a very in-depth conversation about that, as I said, not only with Sheriff Black, but also with his undersheriff, Sean T. First time I've had a chance to speak with him, so it was a great conversation, but exactly what I felt all along, just based on the way I read it and the people that I've talked to, is that the sheriff does not have overriding powers to the state police, just like our police chief doesn't. And they all sort of try to stay in their lane, of course, but but anyway, I did, I wanted to explain that, because he said he had not heard that story, and when I told him what I had heard, he knew exactly what I was talking about. So, just so that we clear that up. And I think that's all I've got. I think that's it.
Any other commissioners? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would any staff member or commissioner like to remove any item on the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as stated? The consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as stated.
I have a motion from Mayor Potem Sykes to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
A second.
I hear a second. I have a second. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Jason Baldwin.
Aye.
Nadia Sykes.
Aye.
Josh Roden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
You're right.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye.
Richard Buss.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to executive session, item ten. And I would like to, before we go into this, I'd like everyone that's watching, please, we will reconvene. We will, we are just taking, this is just going to be a probably a fairly short closed session, but we will be, we will be coming back and it will be live. Do I hear a motion to recess into executive session in compliance with ten dice fifteen dice one eight seven NMSA nineteen seventy-eight as amended to discuss threatened or pending litigation exploring possible public health order litigation? Do I hear a motion to go into executive session? Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
Summoned.
I have a motion from Commissioner Baldwin. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Wright. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Jason Baldwin?
Aye.
Nadia Sykes?
Aye.
Josh Roden?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye.
Richard Bass?
Motion passes. We are going into executive session and that we will be reconvening shortly.